Sure, let me just give me, it's gonna take a little bit to find you all on my Brady Bunch screen.
Sure.
Rowena?
Richard, you're muted. Richard, you're still muted. You need to indicate you're here.
I'm here.
Okay, Ms. Wells?
Here.
Thomas?
You're also muted.
Mr. Mancini?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Johnson?
Here.
And Mr. Shulman?
Here.
Okay, you do have a call.
Okay, then let's begin. The first order of business is going to be a public hearing and we have four of them this evening. Just if there's any public on, just to remind them of the procedure. To the extent it's necessary, this evening we'll hear from the developer at any time during the presentation typically if commissioners have questions, they're free to ask them. Once the developer has completed the presentation, we'll open it up to the public. Only those members of the public who have not already spoken on this matter will be recognized. Again, should commissioners have questions during that period, they're free to ask them. After every, every everyone from the public who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, we will open it up again to the developer for rebuttal. Again, commissioners with questions will at that point be free to ask the questions. When you're called upon and we, we will outline how that's to be done, we just ask that we all keep comments civil. Otherwise, we will need to cut you, cut you off. I should also mention that this has not been something that we've, we've had to do in the, in the recent past, but I simply mention it for purposes of being as complete as possible. Once the developer has completed their response to the public comments, we will close the hearing. And then we, we do have three other public hearings. After we've completed all public hearings, we will discuss the projects individually and the, depending on the feelings of the commissioners, we will likely vote project either up or down. If we feel there's a need for additional information, we may continue the vote until another meeting. But that is not a frequent occurrence. With that, I'll turn it over to Craig Flaherty, representing the developer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Craig Flaherty. I'm a senior engineer in principle with Redness and Mead, a land use consulting company with offices in Stanford and Wilton. Hopefully you've become familiar with our team. You're with us tonight. We have David Stans and Michael Skeena from Toll Brothers. We've got Eric Rains from Eric Rains Landscape Architecture. Mr. Bill Warwick from Barton Partners, our project architect, and my colleague Vincent Hines, who's handled a lot of the engineering. This is a continuation of a past public hearing. We first met with you on October 1st in the plan review session with an initial presentation. Opened the hearing on November 18th. It was continued to 12:09 briefly, continued to 12:15 more substantially. And here we are on January 7th. We believe we've completed everything we need to in order to allow you to consider the application and make a decision, but we'll go over all the remaining items that were open from the last meeting during our presentation tonight. Before I get to Mr. Warwick to talk about some of the architectural updates, I'll mention a couple of things on the site plan that I think are relevant as I share the screen now. That over, look for my Alright, so this is the, the ground floor plan that relates to the elevation of West Avenue. Again, orienting you on West Avenue is on left Orchard Street and the initial block away point to the north here, Children's Museum, Matthews Park to the south, that large pedestrian way cutting through the site. Two really minor updates on the site. One is there was a question about the, whether or not we could do something about the two transformers that we had at this prominent intersection. We worked with mechanical engineer at EverSource and determined that it is most likely feasible to position them in the loading alleyway along Butler Street that does come at some expense to the, to the applicant for additional secondary conduit run and wire run, but they agreed with the comment and we're going to try to make that happen. Another minor comment that was in the design review report had to do with the streetlights along West Avenue. West Avenue corridor uses, you know, taller 25-foot goose neck lights that are primarily designed to light the street. Whereas the side streets, the city uses that more pedestrian scale lamp post that you're more used to on the sidewalk. Bob thought, using a detail, something like this, can you see that changed page?
Okay.
Change it. Did it change?
It did not change.
Oh, it did not change. Alright, so I'll share between sheets here versus sharing the screen, which is good. In order to create a more pedestrian scale kind of a ceiling to the sidewalk, he suggested on those larger streetlights adding a post light feature. And we're happy to work with the streetlight manufacturer and DPW to see if we can make that happen here on the streetscape where it next down in this kind of pedestrian scale section here. Those are really the, oh, sorry, I'm not sharing that, am I?
Yep.
There we go. Yeah, we're talking about right here where we would make that modification. Minor detail, but these are the things that kind of come up during the design review process. Think before I run through just a quick reminder of the special permit standards that you'll be considering in your deliberations tonight, I will ask Bill to highlight a couple of irrelevant changes from a, from the completion of the design review process.
Thank you, Craig. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you. There was really two outstanding items that were left to go through. Bob had pointed out that he thought that perhaps our building, the, the primary entryway into our building should be defined visually a little bit better, which, which was a nice point. So really, the, the primary residential entry is going to occur off the pedestrian way, off of Orchard, again Orchard to the north, West Avenue to the west, pedestrian way cutting through. So we're going to have our leasing office lobby area and amenity areas that are filling this portion of the building. So the, the primary entry, primary residential entry into the lobby is coming off of the pedestrian way. Now, interestingly, and doesn't quite show it through here, but this is where we have our connecting bridge that connects the two pieces. So you actually have a covered entry. The idea being that if you're coming in as potentially a new tenant, you can come into the garage, you would get one of these parking places, come through the corridor, walk through this more minor lobby space, be able to come under the covered entry into the the building lobby, be able to talk to one of the leasing agents, concierge, building manager, what have you, would be in here. So to help make it a little more prominent, we started looking at, oops, oops, where did my drawing go? No, that's not the one I want. I lost the drawing. Well.
It's all for times.
Yeah, I know, I know. So let me go up. There we go. I apologize. I'm sorry about that. So this was the original drawing that we had. This is the Orchard Street elevation. This is that pedestrian bridge or the connecting bridges I mentioned, and this is the, the portal into the pedestrian way. Talking with Bob and Bob has some interesting suggestions. So what we, what we did is we, we made this base a little bit grander. We pulled the base up. We continued different materials. We broke the materials from the adjacent building. We changed some of the detailing that happens up above just slightly. We took out a cornice line. And then you don't see it so well in here, but you'll see in a second, we've added these sort of monumental flags, as you will, to kind of highlight where this entry feature is. This piece also pulls out from the building. Here's a couple of snapshots of it and I'll direct you to this lower piece. See if I can blow this up for just a second. Inside of here where you come down Orchard and you would turn in, we have pulled out a vestibule underneath the, the little bridge there. So this vestibule realistically is, is all glass and would be lit in the evenings, easy to find, easy to spot. Here's, here's a couple of views of what this new component looks like. The flags, the materials, where we've tried to differentiate the base. Here's sort of a, a view from West Avenue. And these are a little bit more in sketch form. This is a view further back on Orchard from across the street. And then finally, this is what it looks like in a little bit of the nicer perspective from up on West Avenue. And this is actually across the street on West Avenue. Again, we, we have it under a prominent feature where it breaks the cornice line. We think that this is a pretty good marker, indication marker of where you would go to find your way into the building for the residential component. So that was, that was one item that we had. The, the other item that we had talked about the, the glazing and the amount of glazing within the storefronts in the retail pieces. So I'm going to flip over to this drawing for a second, which is a little bit more dead-on view of it. This was the, this was the proportioning that we had proposed in our, in our submission. And through Bob's reading of the code and Bob's interpretation of the code, made some suggestions and felt that we needed to have a little bit more glazing. So we, we, we looked at what the recommendation was. And this is what the, the alternative works out to be. It's, it's, it looks subtle in the drawing, but it's not as subtle as you think. Keep your eye primarily on these piers in the middle that come down. Currently in this drawing, these are approximately five feet wide. In this drawing, they work out to just about two feet wide. And the glazing gets significantly wider. You know, we, we think that the proportioning on this worked out a little bit better. We, we presented this to the RDA on Tuesday evening and the RDA preferred disproportioning.
Can you again, for
Yes, sir.
Of, of the public, just tell them what the RDA is.
I'm sorry, the redevelopment authority. I apologize. I'm sorry. Yes. Yes. Been a long week already and it's only Thursday. Yeah, so we, we met with the redevelopment authority on Thursday, on Tuesday evening. We presented these diagrams. We talked through it and it's, the preference appeared to be for this scheme. Those are really the only two remaining items that were open architecturally, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you may have, but that was what was open from the last time that we've met.
Let me, let me just note that since you started your presentation that we've been joined by, excuse me, Attorney Goldstein, Attorney Witherspoon, members of the commission. And with that, let's open it up to questions from the commission members.
I don't have any questions. I was just going to comment that the, that, that your revisions look, look well. They, they look, they look really nice.
Thank you. I appreciate that. You know, we, I've enjoyed the process of working with Bob, frankly. You know, we, we, I said, we, we've bickered like a couple of old architects would, you know, but I've enjoyed the process. Thank you.
Do you have anything outstanding in your mind?
Do I personally? No, I don't think so. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was trying to ask Bob.
I apologize. I
Oh, no worries.
We're all on the screen together. I, the, the only thing I would, I, I think the entry is, is looking much better. And well, for, for the first point, you can actually tell there's an entry there. That's very good. You did not, we talked the other day about a sign, the pinnacle, something or other address, which
Yes.
You think is a good idea or a bad idea?
Well, you know, we want to explore that when we get into the, the branding aspect of it, and it may be that it ends up on one of those flags. We may end up with some signage above the storefront window there that indicates that our property is there, or we may end up with a, with a blade banner that comes down the sign. I, I think that any of those could possibly be in play.
Okay. For the, the process, you know, we're not looking for approvals for, you know, a, a signed package with, with this application. We need to get into, as, as Bill mentioned, you know, the, the overall branding of the building, how it's going to be positioned, maybe understanding some of the retailers and, and we'd be back for zoning permits on those, but certainly there'd be some signage at that entry location that would, would add to its
Absolutely.
Prominent. I would suggest, just as an observation, that the use of flags in the short term is attractive enough, but in the long term, they almost always fail, tear, fade, and owners are not so quick, are not always so quick to replace them. Just, just my own observation.
Fair enough, Mr. Chairman. Fair enough. I, I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
But I do think it sets off the entrance and, and I, I think there's some real value in that.
Thank you.
If I may say notably that the diff, one difference between the, the rendering from West and one of the other drawings, I don't remember which one it was, was the scale of the flags, the larger scale you, that you could see from West. It works.
Yes.
And same thing, a blade sign, not, not just a sign on the facade, which you won't see from West, but a blade sign or something like that.
That would be my preference if we were to put some signage up there.
Alright, so if there are no other discussion points on architecture, I can just review the, the, you can either go to the public and I can, I can sum up afterwards. Maybe, maybe that's the best, or I can go through the special permit standards ahead of time.
Why don't you do it as part of your presentation now?
Sure, of course. So the special permit considerations for approval are provided in your zoning regulations at section 118, 1450 C1. And they run a few which I'll, I'll run through. A is the density, to consider the density of, of use and bulk of the buildings. That really goes back to complying with the, the mass and bulk of the zoning, zoning regulations and certainly through this, you know, what, what has now been a four-month process working with staff. I think we're certain that we meet all of the zoning criteria relative to the use in both the buildings. B is stable traffic flow. You've heard previously from our project traffic engineer, Neil Olinsky. And our traffic, I have a traffic engineer and traffic planner, Alan McBroom. They provided previous testimony. I've had an opportunity to review the draft conditions prepared by staff and they, they do include a condition that we had previously discussed, which is related to the intersection of Butler and West that a year after a certificate of occupancy is granted for the project, we would go ahead and, and re-study that particular intersection and determine whether or not we felt timing changes to the signal were, were necessary and, and provide that report and those recommendations to DPW Traffic Parking and Mobility City of Norwalk for their consideration and implementation if they saw fit. So we had no, no, no issue with that condition. C is the availability, availability of mass transit facilities. I think there's, there's five different wheels lines that run in this vicinity, the West Avenue corridor, and of course, we're within a half mile of the, the transit hub. And I'll remind you again that Toll Brothers is providing shuttle service for their residents down to the train station. Item D is availability and compatibility of utilities. We went through your thorough code enforcement process, which and, and we've received positive referrals from the Department of Public Works on stormwater management, from the Water Pollution Control Authority on the sanitary sewer discharge and their capacity confirmation. Got positive referrals from the First District Water Company for domestic supply and fire suppression supply. Positive referral from EverSource for electric and gas and Altis on communication. So we've confirmed that there is availability and compatibility of utilities. E suggests you consider adverse impact from noise, odor, fumes, dust and artificial lighting. We have provided a photometric plan of the streetlights that are proposed. And the final version of that plan, I think that's another condition, is to be approved by staff and DPW. We have some adjustments to make that we discovered during the process, but of course, we're, we're going to do whatever the city wants on that. The other items don't really apply to this sort of use, noise, odor, fumes, dust. Really that comes up in construction and we've provided a sediment erosion control plan to be followed during construction to use best practices to mitigate those impacts and of course comply with ordinances of the city of Norwalk in that regard. F is signs of a size and design that are in harmony with the neighborhood. We talked about the fact that really all we provided at this point are standard traffic signage. And that we expect future signage to be in conformance with Article 121, the sign regulations, and would be submitted when we had more detail on that. G is adequacy of yards and open space, screening and buffering. Screening and buffering isn't necessarily relevant for a downtown site, but certainly yards and open spaces, and you've seen a very well-thought-out landscape plan from Eric Rains. We comply certainly with all the, the yards, but we're adding something like 30,000 square feet of public realm space around the site and through the site. And we think it's a really a fitting contribution to the neighborhood. H is impact on neighborhood properties as compared to uses instructed, uses and structures permitted as of right. You know, this is extremely consistent with how even the, the micro neighborhood immediately around us has been developed over the last eight years, and this is just another tooth in the smile, as it were. With recent projects completed at the waypoint Quincy Lofts, Tea House Lofts and Berkeley. And the remaining major neighbors are the Old Y site, which we expect might be developed similarly in the future, and the park to the south. Paragraph I is existing land use in the area. Again, that's kind of a repeat of the last answer. I think this is clearly consistent with, you know, the other 658 apartments and 75,000 square feet of commercial floor area constructed over the last six or eight years in the neighborhood. Proximity of community facilities. Again, this is a downtown site. We're in the central business district. There are plenty of things to visit and do within a half mile. The Norwalk Wheels Transit Hub, Norwalk Hospital, Matthews Park, Oyster Shell Park, Norwalk River Valley Trail, Stepping Stones Museum, Lockwood Matthews Mansion, the library, Wall Street Theater, the exciting Norwalk Transport Station Recycling Center, and many churches, the community center, et cetera, not to mention them all. Paragraph K has to do with compliance with the zoning code and plan of conservation and development. Again, we've gone through rigorous process with staff to confirm compliance with the zoning code. And we also believe we're consistent with the plan of conservation and development, which of course references the West Avenue Wall Street Neighborhood Plan and, and instigates the thorough design review process that we have gone through with DeCarlo and Doll for the last three months, which has added considerably to the project. I'll, I'll, I'll point out two P O C D quotes for the record. You know, we are, we're, the future land use plan and the citywide plan of conservation and development shows the property in a mixed-use center. That, that definition is mixed-use centers ranging from vibrant downtown areas to quiet village centers will encourage walkability and bikeability. Buildings should be oriented to the street, ideally with active ground floor uses that provide convenient pedestrian access. Parking should be located in the rear of the parcel or to the side lots where, where they're shallow. Green infrastructure and low-impact development strategy should be used to manage stormwater and to enhance resilience and sustainability. So we believe that quote is aligned with how we've designed and present this project. And we also know that a, a prominent goal of P O C T, P O C D is proactive economic development to grow jobs in the ground list. And of course, this will do that as well. So paragraph L, it's two more, so don't, don't fall asleep yet. Is conservation of wetlands, watercourses and other ecologically valuable lands. There are no wetlands, watercourses or other ecologically valuable lands on the subject parcel. The closest areas of value, of course, of the harbor, which are 900 feet to the east or 600 feet to the east rather, and our stormwater management plan addresses how we will have water quality improvements for waters discharging to the harbor. And last one, of course, is no zoning violate, zoning violations exist on the property and that has been confirmed with staff. So in the end, and not to steal Bob's thunder from his design review report, but of course, the end of that thorough report on page 33, he notes that this project represents a major portion of the implementation of the West Avenue redevelopment plan. Its design incorporates virtually every goal and feature of the neighborhood plan design guidelines and promises to be a handsome addition to the city and the de facto gatehouse scene when entering the neighborhood from the south. Because of these exemplary, because of these and the exemplary design that has resulted, we recommend that the commission approve the application for special permit. And as I said previously, we had an opportunity to take a look at the draft resolution that you may be considering this evening. And we have no questions or comments on how staff has crafted the conditions. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Brian, can I ask you to explain to the public how they can comment on this, what they need to do and how they do it?
Yeah, so anyone from the public who'd like to speak, there's two ways to do it. If you're dialed in on the Zoom call, you'd use the raise your hand feature. If you are using a phone for your audio, you would hit star nine. And if you'd like to speak on this application, you can do so now. Jason, I'm not sure if you're, if you want to speak on this one, you raised your hand? Or if you're waiting for the next one? But I'm more than happy to bring you over.
Hello?
Hey Jason, are you, are you want, you want to talk on this one?
I do.
Okay.
Jason Milligan, 11 Beldenav, Norwalk. I did not originally tune in to listen to this one, but I've been I did not originally tune in to listen to this one, but I've been following this one and I just want to give my support to Craig and his team. I think it's a fantastic project. I wanted to happen sooner. And I wish the process was easier. The fact that they've had to come back so many times for so many months. He's a thorough guy. He can be trusted. That a lot of this stuff is, is wasteful and we could have had this project sooner. Sometimes we miss the market because it's so complicated, but I was happy to learn, talking to Steve Kleppin today, that zoning is going to be overhauled. And I hope that people like Craig are consulted to make the process more streamlined to get these types of projects done more often and quicker. Anyway, good job, Craig.
Thank you, Mr. Milligan. I'd just make one comment on what Mr. Milligan said, and that is in terms of streamlining the process, I think there's, there's been some real value added to the project by Bob Griswitz's involvement in it. And that necessity has indeed lengthened the time it's taken us to get to this point. However, I think as a result, we have an improved project. And I think frankly, from my point of view, it's been worth the additional time it's taken us. Given the quality of the final project. I apologize for interrupting. Brian, have you any other speakers?
Not yet. If anyone else wants to speak, you could use the raise your hand feature or hit star nine. That's it, Lou.
Okay. Any other, before we go back to Mr. Flaherty, are there any other questions from the commission members? All right. If not, Mr. Flaherty will turn it back to you for final comments.
We'll take no news as good news. You know, I think, I think yes, the, the project takes, the process takes a little time, but what I do want to say is that we really appreciate, you know, the comments we received from the commission. The, the process working with Bob, the process working with staff. You know, there was a lot of back and forth that you didn't necessarily see. And I think everybody was, had, had the heart and had the hearts in the right place trying to make this a better project and, and we're very happy with the result and we're very happy with the level of cooperation we received.
Thank you. All right. If there are no other questions, we will close this public hearing. And we'll move on to the next. The next being five dash 20 SPR, Wall Street Recap Associates, 61 Wall Street. I think this eve, in, in, in the past, we have held a single hearing to receive comments on these two separate projects. But because this evening we're being asked to vote on them, I think we should treat them as individual projects. Doesn't mean there can't be some crossover. But I think we ought to take them one at a, one at a time. And with that, we'll, we'll call on the representative for the developer attorney Hennessy for any comments.
I really think our comments have all been previously provided to you, Mr. Chairman. It was our understanding that tonight was principally reserved for you to receive comments from the redevelopment agency who met 48 hours ago. And I think my take was that they were very pleased with the design. They were very pleased with the collaboration of our architect, Mr. Weissbrot with Mr. Griswitz. And the chief thing to decide is, as, as you might recall, is the type of mulions to integrate into the project. And I think they agreed with you that the, that the molyan look as opposed to the clear glass look had a little bit more appeal. Other than that, I think they were very much inclined to recommend approval. I assume your staff has that report to give to you and can convey that. If there's anything that you would like us to amplify on, we're of course happy to do that. But that, that we've discussed this many times with you and I think we've covered everything and I think our submittal papers demonstrate why the, the application before you ought to be approved and we look forward to that.
Okay. Are there any final questions from the members of the commission regarding the application? Right? If not, we have heard a public comment before on this matter, but if there is someone waiting to speak who has not commented before. Ryan, let's, let's open it up and see if there's anyone who hasn't had an opportunity to speak in the past.
Sure. So same, same rules. Anyone would like to speak, you could use the raise your hand tool or hit star nine. It's just Mr. Milligan again, Lou. So.
All right. Mr. Milligan has had an opportunity to speak and so we're, we are not going to permit him to speak again now. All right. If there is no one else, again, any final questions or comments from the commissioners before we close this hearing?
What would you say on the affordability, affordable housing aspect? I know I asked last time, the, the income ranges. What would you estimate the rents being on the, for the folks right now? I know that changes with markets, et cetera, et cetera. But like, what would you ballpark that?
I'm going to, Mr. Cantor, I'm going to defer to Mr. McClutchie, Todd McClutchie, who I see here. Todd, can you address that?
I can. And bear with me for a half a second, if you don't mind. So there, there is a wide range. Are you just looking for more of a an average of those? You want to know what the range is? What is?
More like the average on the, for the, more of the affordable units versus the market.
Got it.
Can we find just affordable housing to be very confusing and that change, it's just a wide term that doesn't always, you know, I just, I just like double clicking here and what that actually means.
And Mr. Schulman, I think this is one of those questions that sort of crosses both, both applications. Yeah.
I think that's correct.
Just to make it clear for the record. And certainly my, my comments about the window related to 61 Wall Street, not 17 Isaac and just, just for clarification.
I promise I won't ask the question again.
So the, the average, I would say is going to be in the 1,400 dollar range.
And for what, what type unit would that be? Would that be a one bedroom?
Yeah, look, that'd be a two bedroom.
Okay. Next, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, that's all good. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. I didn't have it at my fingertips. No, and I know staff did some work on this too. So I was just trying to just see what everyone was thinking. So perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions from commission members? All right. If not, we'll, we'll close this hearing and move on to the next. And that's six dash 20 SPR, Wall Street Recap Associates LLC Municipal Holdings LLC. Second Garden Development Limited Partnership, 17 Isaacs Street Construction of New Four Story Building with Two Upper Residential Stories to Include 50 Units Above Parking Garage Level With 152 Plus or Minus Parking Spaces. Again, back to Attorney Hennessy.
I'll, I'll just repeat my same comments. You know, I think we've thoroughly vetted this out. I think our application materials explain why we comply with the regulations and respectfully believe that we deserve an approval from this commission. We've worked hard with everybody in the city and through the CAC agencies of review. And we've worked very hard with Mr. Griswitz as a peer review architect. And we're very proud of this and we look forward to constructing it.
Questions from? I'm sorry. Is there a question?
No, it's just some feedback, Lou.
Oh, okay. Any questions from commission members? All right. If not, let's open it to the public again, persons who have not had an opportunity to speak on this matter.
So again, you'd use the raise your hand feature. Anyone from the public, use the raise your hand feature or you could dial star nine. So we have a phone number. So you just have to say your, your name and number when I bring you over. And to unmute yourself on a phone, you'd hit star six.
So this is Jason Milligan again. You have two applications before you.
You're going to have to cut this off. I apologize, Mr. Milligan, but I think we've made it clear from the start that each of us gets one bite at the apple. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
So again, just for the public and you could use the raise your hand feature or hit star nine. I think that's it, Lou.
Okay. Again, back to Attorney Hennessy.
No, I have nothing to add, except we want to thank you for your patience and your attentiveness and your stick to itiveness throughout its entire process.
Again, any other questions from commission members? Okay. If not, we'll close this hearing and move on to the final hearing of the evening. That's 11 dash 20 SP slash nine dash 20 CAM. BPC Capital Management to LLC 96 East Avenue. And let's open that hearing. Who is going to be representing the applicant on this one?
Good evening, Chairman Schulman and members of the zoning commission. My name is Mark Klein. I'm the attorney for BPC Capital Management, which is the applicant. Can everybody see? I think I noticed.
We can see the drawing and we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Yeah, I've just, in the background here is just the proposed elevations, the south and the east elevations for the project here. This application is for 96 East Avenue in Norwalk. And as I mentioned, the applicant is BPC Capital Management too, which is a property manager and developer of historic buildings. It does business as the, as Norwalk Green Living. The special permit application is proposes to convert the property at 96 East Avenue in Central Norwalk from commercial offices to eight residential apartment units and 425 square feet of commercial space in a slightly expanded building and a re-oriented, reoriented site plan. Norwalk Green Living is a contract purchaser of the property. The current owner is Shanghai MBA Trading Company, which we have available John Bovee, who's a zoning attorney in Norwalk and is also a part owner of the building. We also have Frank Derano, who's the architect for the project, who's going to give you some more specific details after I give you a little bit of a general overview. We also have Wayne DeVanzo, the civil engineer who's going to be speaking. Michael Galante, who is the traffic engineer, is also available to speak if necessary. And we also have Brad Craighead, who is the principal of Norwalk Green Living Properties. Brad's an experienced developer in the Norwalk area. He has an interest in preserving and, and the adaptive reuse of historic buildings, specifically in the East Village District and the neighborhood immediately surrounding the Norwalk Green. This is going to be his seventh project in the city of Norwalk and his fifth building conversion project in the East Village District. He's investing in these properties and all, this property and all of his properties for the long term because he doesn't sell them. He holds on to the buildings and acts as the landlord for all the residents of these properties. In this regard, Norwalk Green Living's objectives are aligned with the community. And the properties are built to last with extremely high quality construction materials and beautifully landscaped exteriors. He's, he's, you know, several projects, you know, as I mentioned, right around the, the current property at 96 East Avenue, including 85 East Avenue, right across the street, 87 East Avenue as well. They're both actually diagonally across the street. And Two Park Avenue and Eight Lewis Street are, are some of the projects which he's done a fantastic job on. He truly invests in the committed community and is also a founder of the Norwalk Green Association, which whose board is represented by most of the, the private and property owners around the green, which includes St. Paul's Episcopal, the Norwalk Historical Society, Milwauk, Mill Hill Historic Park and the First Congregational Church. The Norwalk Green Association's ethos is based on building community, improving walkability and raising awareness around the Norwalk, you know, the neighborhood and its calendar of local events. Mr. Craighead and in turn, the Norwalk Green Living has been instrumental in helping to revitalize and at the same time preserve the Norwalk Green Neighborhood's unique New England style character. I'm sure you're familiar with many of these properties, which all exhibit the same classic architectural elements consistent with the other buildings in the East Village District. That includes white colonial clavert style structures and beautifully landscaped properties, discreet outdoor recreational space built with brick and natural bluestone materials. These completed projects, you know, I already mentioned some of them. All the buildings are located in close proximity to the property at 96 East Avenue. By leading the way with the preservation, adaptive reuse and ongoing management of the properties, Norwalk Green Living has contributed directly to the neighborhood's improvement and thus helped its position as the gateway to Wall Street for those people that live and work there, particularly in the areas located within walking distance to the commercial district in the area. So this, you know, per the regulations for the East Village zoning district, the completed property is going to have almost 2,000 square feet of open patio and open recreational space, which is significantly in excess of the 150 square foot minimum requirement per eight residential units. So in compliance with the, the parking requirements, the site's going to offer night 17, I'm sorry, 17 spaces to residents with eight designated to the four two bedroom units, six allocated to the four one bedroom units and three designated to the non-residential commercial office space. The design and character of this, the boutique apartment building and site will be entirely consistent in architectural style with the other traditional buildings in the surrounding neighborhood. And it's expected to appeal to the growing segment of the population that's seeking to work from home on a part-time basis. Beginning with our Zoom meeting on October 28th, the last year with Stephen Michelle, we've worked very closely with, with the zoning commission and the East Village District's consultants. We've sourced and incorporated their feedback and suggestions into the project and amended the plans as needed, which include, for example, a total of 825 square feet of non-residential office space at the plaza level. I'm sorry, I believe that's 425 of a non-residential office space at the plaza level. For the avoidance of doubt and as highlighted in the preliminary zoning meeting on December 20, December 9th, the building's main entrance is located at the rear of the property, which is consistent with many of the properties in the area and the building's existing use and the orientation. The plaza level's main entrance therefore serves as the most convenient location for the non-residential space because it has direct access to the main parking area of the property. So before I turn the presentation over to the architect and civil engineer, and civil engineer, I'd like to reiterate and summarize our overall view of the project, which is shared by the East Village District consultant as detailed in their memo dated December 23rd, that the scope, scale, design, and use of the proposed project is both compatible and consistent with the surrounding buildings in the immediate vicinity as well as the other properties in the East Village District. We believe it will greatly benefit and enhance the Norwalk Green, Norwalk Green neighborhood and the broader East Village District while maintaining its historical features. As such, we respectfully request that the zoning commission approve the special permit application. But I will now turn it over to Frank Dierno, the architect, to give you more specific details regarding the project.
I'm the architect in this project, working together with Brad and Mark. And we are gonna go to SP1 site plan. Mark will bring that up. So what we're looking at is the SP1 drawing, first street level coming in from East Avenue. Procession is reusing the existing one-way access right side coming in, going downhill into the site, which is pre-existing, and coming into the building at the west side, the rear of the lot, where as it exists is a majority of the parking now, and we're keeping that. We're designating the parking in the rear where there is the green space and the procession into the building. So we call this the plaza level, where you're entering at the lowest level of the building. And if we go into A1...
One second.
So this procession is through the plaza level. There are two parking spaces at the entry that are covered. They're underneath the building. So this is at the west side, and it's called Plaza Entry. So that is really the main entry into the building. As consistent as what is there now, there is several entries into the office space that are there. This brings us into the sequence in the building. Primarily is the first level of the community office space, which is non-residential space. We're offering 400 square feet of community office space, and we are also offering 425 square feet of commercial office space. Primarily seeing what has happened over the last year, many people are home working, and we're offering this community office space as something very viable to today's demographic of people working at home. So that sequence takes you through the hallways and up the stair that will bring you up to the plaza level. And if we go back to SP1... Thanks, Mark. So you look at the center of the building, we come up the main stair that is now exterior, and that brings us right into the middle of this project. So we're bringing new age residents into this building through six of the entryways coming up through the open patio in the center of this development. So three are accessing towards the rear, and there are another three accessing towards the front. Center of the building, open space, open patio, community space. So we're giving some alternatives to people, not just driving and walking into their door, but they're becoming a sequence into a building that is community. There's also a community interior space on that same patio area. The two spaces are units that are non-entry at that point. It's the original facade on East Avenue, which has a covered porch. So we're giving that entry back to the original front facade, and they're able to park on the south side and walk right into their unit, which is a one-bedroom. So we're offering four one-bedroom units and four two-bedroom units in this project. And then Unit 5, which is at the west side, offers a separate entry on the north stair coming down into the project, and that is at the rear of the building. So I'd like to show you the elevation of A5 that would show the west elevation at the plaza entry. Okay, so here is the south elevation, and there's the west. So there is the entry. The drawing shows the plaza entry into the building, and scale and massing are proportional to what we're doing with the facades and off-the-side, giving a more residential scale that we've all worked on with the review committee and some very good points that we worked hard on to just get the proportions right, get the site and scale of the building correct. If you look at the north elevation, that brings into the covered porch on the left side of the building. You can see the community space that is connecting the overall building that is enclosed. So it's an all-season room. And we brought in bay windows to these projects into this building that really, again, give you that residential feel. And once again, people will be working from home. The idea is that we bring these bay windows so they can set up a home-area office desk or a laptop and really have some natural light, since they're in their home quite often. Let's go back to A5. I wanna talk about the east elevation. So here is the proposed east elevation. It's bringing back some of the features that originally exist on the building, the pediment facade. The elliptical window is part of that architecture that we are bringing back to this building. It currently has an arched double hung. We are putting in a pediment with a true elliptical window. The double hungs will remain. We are keeping the front porch. There's some beautiful styled cast iron fretwork that is creating the archways to this front porch. We are sensitive to these review committee that is also looking at what can we bring back in that character. So to the best of our ability, we're gonna see what is usable and keep the arch fretwork intact, replace the columns to a more strengthened column. It doesn't seem as though it's working well. And the railings will be replaced because the existing railings at this point are not code compliant, and they're all metalwork. So I don't believe we'll be able to save and modify what's there. But the porch will remain. The idea of the porch proportions, we're gonna be using a standing seam metal roof on these front porch and on the connecting community space porch. And some of the dormers will have this feature as well as the bay The siding material on this building will be a seven-inch clavert siding, white. The corner boards will be white. And the windows, we are taking out a true classic black frame window with white trim around it, and the dividing line mounds that we reviewed with the committee and made some adjustments to proportion of the light cuts that is expressed here in the drawings. So overall, we're really proud of this project and have been working with the commission and the committee review on really bringing all the scale and elements together to be really looking forward to this project entering into the community and the architecture of Norwalk.
Mr. Dierno, as I'm looking at this drawing, the lower drawing, is the building, the portion of the building on the right-hand side, is that new construction?
So we're keeping the original structure at the front, East Avenue, and the proportion in the building, we're adding to the second floor of the East Avenue proportions, massing, and then the new structure is to the west.
You may have answered my question, but if you did, I don't understand it. I apologize. What I'm looking at is the lower of the two drawings that you, that you're showing us on the screen. The question I'm asking, am I correct that the building on the left-hand side is the original building and the building on the right-hand side is new construction?
On the south elevation on A5, the existing portion of the building is on the right side, and the new structure is on the left side.
Frank, let me just step in for one second. Mr. Chairman, the, on the bottom right-hand corner of the screen is where the covered porch is. That's the existing building. That's the wraparound porch that you see from East Avenue if you're looking across from the Norwalk Inn. That part of the building will remain, or will be reconstructed to look the same way that it is now. We're gonna keep the foundation. As Frank has mentioned, we're gonna keep as much of the fretwork as we can, which is the historic component. We're actually gonna go back and put in this Greek Revival pediment and then half the window at the top, which is very consistent with live around East Ave. In this part of East Avenue, you'll see that most of the buildings, not most, but many of them have this exact feature that was lost along the way. But we're gonna be raising the roof slightly from the front of the building, but it will look more in keeping when the project is complete than it does now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I'll just add that on that, on that point, if you drive around the green, you'll see that most of the buildings there are white clavert with, with this style window cut. And so what we're trying to do is bring, is kind of capture and preserve the New England feeling that you get from so many of these buildings. Many of them have been significantly modified over the years. And if you look almost directly across the street, the two buildings that I did over the course of the last four years are gonna, this will very much resemble those as well. The black windows, the white clavert siding, very residential in feeling and very consistent and compatible with the neighborhood. That's the intent.
So the picture at the top is the front of the building, and the picture in the bottom is from the side with the front of the building to the, to the right hand.
That's correct.
Okay. So what you'd see from East Avenue is what is the top illustrated?
Yes. You don't, the whole idea is to really preserve the view from East Avenue. So you don't really see much. It's not gonna appear much different. You have to drive in, drive down, and look behind the building. And to be honest, frankly, so many of these buildings have been built out that way, but they don't have the benefit of this central courtyard that we've done to separate the massing and make it look more proportional. A lot of the buildings that are there have just been addition after addition after addition without a real conscious effort into looking at how the whole property looks in terms of perspective and landscaping and so forth. So we're trying to spread the property out, the massing out, to make it look as welcoming as possible.
You said this, but could you repeat it? Because I'm not sure I remember. There are four one-bedrooms and four two-bedroom units?
Yes. So we have, there are four, there are four two-bedrooms and there are four one-bedrooms. That's right. One of the one-bed, one of the, one of the, that's correct. We're struggling with trying to get a second bedroom into one of the units, which I think in our previous presentation, we had five two-bedrooms. There's just not enough room. There's not enough headspace in it. So from my perspective, I'm always trying to, there's a trade-off between square footage and having quality space. I'm inclined to have higher quality, better aesthetics, less square footage. It's not to me about cramming in another set two bedrooms. I wanna have something that actually feels good on the inside as much as it, as it pleases the eye from the outside. The question is four and four. I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
I just asked, will they be rentals?
Yes, they're all rentals.
And about what would the rent be for the one-bedroom and the two-bedrooms?
You know, the pricing of these apartments is pretty comparable to Waypoint. So one-bedrooms are now between $2,000 and $2,500 a month. Two-bedrooms are $2,750 to $3,250. The pricing, basically what my product is, is that it's, it's an alternative to the big apartment communities. And now with what's going on with COVID and people moving out of very dense areas, they really wanna live in places like the Norwalk Green area that has great outdoor space, that has lower overall density, but is in very close proximity to the Wall Street area. Once the bars and restaurants and merchants come back to, once that area's, you know, revived, then the idea is that we're trying to bring the two parts of the neighborhood together. Thank you.
I believe Wayne is here, who's part of our team for the civil engineering portion. Wayne?
Yes, thank you. For the record, Wayne DeVanzo, Fairfield County Engineering. The proposed development, as you can see from the plan that Mark has just put up, the impervious surfaces are actually reduced by 800 square feet as proposed. Therefore, it meets the drainage manual requirements of the city. However, we felt that we should control the runoff better anyway, so we are providing a retention system nonetheless in the middle of the parking area or under the middle of the parking area of 64 linear feet of 24-inch concrete galleries. And the runoff from, pretty much from the driveway and parking surfaces will be directed to that and, and recharge groundwater and reduce runoff loss of the property even further. Basically, we're creating sort of a basin where the low point is, is in the middle and, you know, doing our best to almost eliminate any, any impact on any of the neighbors.
Where, where, where does the rear parking lot drain to?
Currently or as proposed?
As proposed.
It will drain to, there's three catch basins that are proposed there that maybe you can see on that, on that plan. There's, yeah, right where that cursor just was. So that the rear area drains into those, and part of the driveways on either side also drain down into, into those drains and then into the retention system, which is between all of that.
Thank you. Questions of the commissioners? Questions of the commissioners? All right, Mr. Dierno, should we move on?
Yeah, Mark, do you want to conclude on the presentation?
Uh, yeah, that's, that's, uh, that's, although we have, um, I want to thank greatly everybody that's, that's assisted with this, this application. Steve and Michelle have provided a lot of great input that we've responded to all along the way, and, you know, we've been very responsive to their comments. And we also appreciated the feedback of the zoning commission that we received at the, the last hearing in December. And we tried to incorporate everything in that, including, you know, including more of the, you know, the wrought iron work that, on the facade of the building. So, you know, we've, this has been a very collaborative process that, that we appreciate everybody's input. And we do feel that, you know, the application submitted complies with all of the requirements of the, the applicable special permit regulations. So we would greatly appreciate the zoning commission's approval.
Thank you. Brian, any comments from staff?
Only if Michelle has any. She and Steve were the two primary reviewers on this one.
All right, Michelle?
No, I don't have anything. Everything was in my memo.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, let's open it up to the public.
Sure, so if anyone from the public would like to speak on this application, you could use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine. So we have a phone number, just make sure you say your name and address for the record. And to unmute, hit star six.
Hello, everybody. It's Jason Milligan, 11 Belden Avenue, Norwalk. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Before I talk about Brad's project, which I'm very much in favor of, I'd like to make a general comment. And I'm the only one who's speaking from the public today. There's been a lot of talking, you're very verbose, Lou, and I find it appalling that you are turning away members of the public. I have three sentences to say about the project, the previous project. And the way that you've been handling it in the past, you've noticed that it was done incorrectly and you made a change to that and you actually take it independently because it is two separate projects. And just on a technicality sake, why wouldn't you give me the time to talk about it? It just seems so strange that you would do that when I had so little to say about it. So I'm going to implore you to let me say my three sentences about it, because why would you want an appeal on such technical grounds? But aside from that, I'd like to commend Brad. I own property on East Avenue. I've, you know, a fan of Brad's work. He's done tremendous job renovating those buildings, especially the more recent ones at 85 and 87. Those projects, those, those buildings were, I think, illegal in some ways. They were run down. They had, you know, looked terrible from the street. And, you know, what he's doing to the, the district, both with his projects and in organizing, organizing the community, is to be commended. So, good job, Brad, and I, I fully support that. To the extent that helps you, to the extent it doesn't, then I don't. Lou, are you going to let me say the three sentences I have to say about the other projects?
I'm, I'm sorry, no.
Great, thank you for doing that.
Uh, Brian, anyone else who wishes to speak?
Sure, so if anyone else would like to speak, you can use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine. I think that's it, Lou.
Okay, then I'll turn it back to Mr. Klein for any final comments.
I think I've said what I needed to say. Just wanted to thank everybody for hearing us tonight. And, and again, would just ask for, for, for your approval of this tremendous project, which I think is going to be a, a great benefit to, to the East Village District and the Norwalk Green area.
Any final questions or comments by the commission? All right, if not, we'll close this public hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Brian, we're going to move on to review and action on pending applications. Let me, I'm sorry, I'm just changing my view. Okay. The only people we should be looking at now are members of the commission. And I believe that's, I believe that's the case. All right, so first item, actions on items 3A to D. Let's begin with item A. TB Norwalk Apartments, 467 West Avenue, 17 Butler Street, 3 Quincy. The project we know as the pinnacle. Brian, do we have a, do we have proposed language there?
Yeah, just pulling up right now.
Well, while Brian is pulling it up, can I have a motion either to approve or deny this application?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Michael made the motion to approve. Josh, Josh seconded it. And if you've located a motion to approve, can we pull it up on the screen, please?
I don't know why it's giving me a hard time now, but I will get it.
Steve, can you pull that up?
Steve jumped it off real quick for the planning committee.
What, I'm sorry, just got back up.
Steve is back.
What, what do you need?
We need the motion to approve. We have a motion on the floor to approve 9-20 SP.
For Pinnacle, Steve.
Oh, you, do you need the resolution?
Yes.
Yeah, Microsoft Edge doesn't play well with Zoom, apparently.
Is that on the website, Brian?
Uh, yes, but I made, yeah, yes, there.
Give me 30 seconds if you don't mind.
Okay. Well, while, while Steve is pulling it up, comments from the commission on the motion?
I don't have any.
I think it's, it's an exciting project to actually see it come to fruition and connecting the park with Waypoint. And I think Valley Way is going to be really interesting. I'm excited. It is, I think it really will be able to just walk the whole way from Waypoint down to, to Sono.
I gotta be honest, we saw this project maybe a year ago. I just got up to see. Prior to COVID, and it took a different form. I think there was going to be a bowling alley and a movie theater and obviously COVID shuttered that, but that was, uh, I, I think the improvements are good now.
Well, not only that, Frank, but it's an entirely different developer. The project was, was sold. And I think overall, they've come back with what represents a stronger, a stronger project. As you know, I would have preferred to have seen a little more retail, but they, the, the developer has pushed back very hard on that, basically saying that they don't see a market for that retail in it. At some point, we hear that often enough and we see the vacancies at Waypoint. You come to agree with, with their position.
So the resolution here is pretty much the same that I had emailed. The one right change since then was this highlighted section, which was based on redevelopment agency's approval. So we just took the language and redevelopment's approval and added it to our conditions and then included the language for the Moline layout. The redevelopment agency preferred the, the layout with the, the additional Mollians with the, the wider.
Five-foot Mollians as opposed to two-foot?
Correct.
Mollians.
Yep.
We have a motion and it's seconded.
I have a motion, but I am looking for feedback on that motion from the commission members.
And I also like that we added in the, into the, the resolution on if there's wear and tear on the building. I think that was, that was something that I think was a nice addition as well.
If I can find that one.
I think it was 31, I was just looking at it. No, did I make it up?
21.
21, there you go, there's a one in it.
Okay.
And that was, I think that would stem from Bob's comments about some of the Waypoint infrastructure starting to get worn and there wasn't really much to do about it. But this, I think, gives.
Right, and you, you know, you, you, you may have noticed that, is it, I, you know, sometimes bits of the projects run together. There was also a requirement that there's a hard surfacing material used for the first 12 feet. I'm not certain. There it is.
Yeah.
And it seems to me, and I think I've mentioned this to the staff, that now that we're going to be in the process of rewriting the zoning regulations, that for any major project, this probably makes sense. We don't want a large project like Waypoint where materials are easily, on the lower levels accessible to the public, can be easily damaged. And a simple, straightforward language like, like this might, might avoid that type of problem, whether it's, whether it's masonry or a hard metal base or some other very resilient and strong material. So I've, I've suggested that we keep that in mind as we're considering our rewrite. It's, it's, it's my feeling that not only has the developer here worked very closely with, with staff and with Bob on this, but they've worked closely with us, members of the zoning commission, to, as Mr. Flaherty has pointed out, to meet all of the requirements of, of the special permit. And so I will be voting in favor of this resolution. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
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 Okay, I think we ought to do a roll call vote. And the vote will be in favor of the resolution before us.
Sure, everybody ready? I can go right ahead.
Okay.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Mancini?
Yes.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Scholman?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. All right. Let's move on to B. 5-20 SPR, Wall Street Recap Associates Municipal Holdings LLC, Second Garden Development, 61 Wall Street. Can I have a motion? Either to approve or disapprove? Mr. Goldstein?
Move to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
No, second.
Second by Mr. Mancini. Steve, can you put up a resolution?
Sure.
Now typically, on, on these projects, whether it's TB Norwalk or this one or the following one, we would read the letter from the redevelopment agency, but since they have been incorporated into these motions, we don't need to do that.
Steve, I didn't see the, where, for lack of a better phrase, wear and tear condition on this project. Was that intentional?
No, because I gave it to Brian for Wall Street's place. So I'm hoping I didn't cut it, because it should be in there. Let me scroll down, bear with me.
What, number eight?
No, I think it's, yeah, right there, 21. It should be on both. It should be on both, because I do two separate resolutions since there were two projects, but it should be on both. And I have the dates in there, I'll just remove the highlights from those. But other than that, I, I think it's complete. Is there anything specific you want me to scan too?
I know we've heard a lot from a lot of folks and I'm just curious, what are other commissioners' thoughts on the project at this point?
I mean, I think that, I mean, as we, I think, discussed at our last meeting, you know, there was a lot that's encouraging about this project. I just want to make sure, I'm looking at Brian's email from the fifth and there was a list of outstanding items. And I've attached the revised memo with the draft resolution that includes all these conditions. That's what we're looking at right now.
No, that was, that was for Pinnacle, Josh.
I'm sorry, that's for Pinnacle, my mistake. Whoops.
I wasn't at the last meeting, but I watched the video and I was really happy to hear how closely they've worked with the residents of 19 Isaacs, because I know people were very concerned about having this huge mass so close. So I think what they came up with is really great. And I think I saw in this resolution, the language is in here somewhere about their transformers, right? Okay.
Yes, I can scroll up to that.
I remember seeing it, but.
There it is, 16.
There are a lot of dense resolutions. There are a lot of dense resolutions today.
Right. Before we vote on this, a question for both Nick and Frank. You have both missed a number of meetings. I believe at least one and maybe more of those were, were conversations regarding this project. Just curious, did both of you view the tapes on these for the meetings that you missed?
I might have missed one if, if that's, I don't recall missing one for this product, with this project's on the agenda, but I don't recall. So I'm happy to abstain at this point.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Chairman, if I made an interruption, just to make sure that I think we should make sure, you know, you have seven voting members. Make sure that the seven seated members have all, have listened to or attended each of the meetings regarding this project. We should probably just clarify that for the record now.
All right, that's fine. Is there anyone who has missed a meeting where they have not then followed up and reviewed the recording of the meeting? Where we had discussed this project?
I may have, but I'm happy to abstain, especially as.
Yeah, I feel, I feel the same way. Yeah, I don't know if I necessarily missed this. When I do, I always read the minutes or sometimes go back to the tape.
Yeah.
But I'm not religious with it, but I try to stay abreast of everything that's going on. But I'll be happy to, to, to abstain if necessary.
In the future, I will do a better job of keeping track of that as well. Because I would hate to keep you from voting on a matter where, where you had, had viewed everything. Is there, is there anyone else who has missed, missed a meeting on this where you have not had an opportunity to review the recording? Okay, I'm, I'm seeing a lot of heads shaking, indicating that that's, that's not the case. So on all of the votes on this matter, we'll, we'll ask Nick and Frank to refrain from voting. But let's call the question and again, let's do this as a roll call.
Sure. And Mr. Chairman, just a one point for the commission. The yellow text highlighted there, I don't, we did not receive any additional comments from Mr. Griswartz related to this application. So I'll delete that from the clause under both applications.
I think it is worth noting how responsive the developer in this instance has been to Mr. Griswartz's suggestions regarding this project. I, I, I think they've, developers worked very hard to be responsive, not only to him, but to our, our comments as well. Okay.
Your comment about our architect's value added was right on point. He's, I think he's been an asset to Norwalk and to the projects we've been looking at, that's for sure.
Thanks, Richard. All right, Steve?
Sure. If you're ready, I can call the vote for you.
I believe we are.
Right. So you'll be voting on, keep voting on, probably take two separate votes. Makes the most, the most sense. We should vote, well, actually we have.
We're doing items A to D. We'll do, we'll do B and C, which are the CAM applications, which we closed out some time ago. We'll do those separately afterward.
Okay, so this will be a vote on number five dash twenty SPR, Wall, Wall Street Recap Associates Municipal Holdings, et cetera, for 61 Wall Street.
That's correct.
And the vote would be in favor of the motion. Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
I believe I got all seven, correct?
You did. And again, this is a unanimous vote and I, I think that's a reflection of the cooperation among all of the parties in the development of this project. All right. I'm sorry.
No, I'm stealing your thunder. Sorry, I'll, I'll be quiet.
The next item we're voting on is six dash twenty SPR, Wall Street Recap Associates LLC Municipal Holdings. And that is 17 Isaac Street, construction of the four-story building with parking and residential units. Is there a motion to either approve or deny the request of the developer?
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, Richard moved and Michael seconded comments. I mean, I'm inclined to say with regard to the previous project, ditto. You know, I, again, I, they worked hard to be responsive to Mr. Griswartz, to the staff and to our comments, as well as working with their, the concern of one of their immediate neighbors. And I mean, clearly these two projects work with one another. In fact, one doesn't work without the other. We need the parking, we need the housing. I think we, we need both projects and they're both projects of good quality. Other comments from commission members?
Ditto.
Sorry to see the garden street, garden cinemas to close, but aside from that, I think it's a good, good replacement.
Yeah, I, I miss it as well. All right. Then let's, let's have a roll call vote again. Nick and Frank will not be voting on, on this matter. Steve, do a roll call.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
All right. Sorry, go ahead.
Did you put up the resolution?
Oh, sure.
We should take a look at it. I, as I recall, it's almost identical to the other, but we should have it in front of us as we're voting.
And I'll take off the. Like me, you go just jump to the conditions.
Steve, I know you and I had a very brief conversation regarding number 17. And I'm wondering if we should have a time on that.
Oh. Yeah, we could. We could do something similar to what we did with 19.
Is is a week too short a period of time?
I, it might, you know, because it also could be dependent on the weather too, if you had a really wet, who knows? I don't know what the process involved. Snowy or something like that.
What would you suggest?
I, I'd say you could copy the, the term that's also indicated in number 19.
Thirty days, that makes sense.
Thirty days.
Isn't time to do it.
That's reasonable.
And it'd also probably be subject to the blight ordinance too, so, you know, they, they would.
Okay.
Come after them.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Okay, we have a revised motion. Can we do a roll call to approve?
Sure. Mr. Goldstein? Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Schulman? That's unanimous as well.
Okay, good. All right. And finally, on the public hearing side, we'll be voting on item D, eleven dash twenty SP slash nine dash twenty CAM, BPC Capital Management, 96 East Avenue, eight residential units in historic building. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Okay, Richard moves. There are second?
Second.
Stephanie, second. Steve, can put that resolution up?
Brian, you have that one by any chance?
I can put it up.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Michelle.
Guys, just want to see the resolution, right?
I'm sorry I didn't hear that.
Guys, just want to see the resolution part.
Okay. All right, any questions or comments on the resolution? If not, let's do a roll call. I'm sorry, did I not ask for a motion? I apologize. Motion, motion to approve?
There is a motion.
There is a motion.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Motion was seconded.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, Steve? Steve?
All right.
Yeah?
Wait, I'm sorry. Steve, did number two happen?
Number two being?
That a certificate of special permit and the MYLR of the approved survey be filed prior to issuance of a zoning permit? Did that happen?
No, 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 that happens after you approve it.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
Yeah, so that, that, so that, yeah, so they'll, after, after, you know, the approval, they'll, they'll develop their plans further.
That's what I, yeah.
And submit everything to a zoning permit that we match up with what was approved by you.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Just wanted to check.
All righty, are we ready for a vote?
I believe we are.
Okay, and I'm just, just the regular members are voting.
Right.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous as well.
All right.
You forgot me.
No, just the seated member, sorry.
All right, we have two other items and those are the action on the CAM. Five dash twenty SPR, oh seven dash twenty CAM, Wall Street Recap Associates LLC Municipal Holdings, Second Garden Development Limited Partnership, 61 Wall Street, construction of the, an existing six-story frame structure. You may recall, we closed the CAM hearings some weeks ago, but did not vote on them, so we're voting on them this evening. Steve, do we have resolutions on these?
I was just thinking, I don't have separate resolutions for the CAM applications themselves. Some of the whereas language was included with the, with the site plan approval. So I, I mean, Brian, what do you think? I, I think you could move this just as, you know, indicate that the applications are consistent with the Coastal area, Coastal Area Management Act regulations.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Can I have a motion to that effect?
Hello?
Galen moves.
Second.
And, excuse me, Michael, Michael seconds. Again, Steve, let's do a roll call vote.
Sure, and that, that's in reference to five dash twenty SPR dash. five dash twenty SPR dash oh seven dash twenty CAM, which is
That's correct.
Sixty-one Wall Street.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
That also is unanimous.
All right. And the second is six dash twenty. SP oh eight slash twenty CAM. And that's seventeen Isaacs Street. And that would also be a motion to approve the CAM application is consistent. Motion to that effect?
Moved.
Rod moves, there are second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, Josh, seconds. Let's do a roll call.
Sure, Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Okay, that's also unanimous.
Okay, well. Thank you all. This has been a long slog for all of us. These are large, significant developments in, in the heart of the city, and we've been working on them now for many months. I appreciate your tolerance and the effort you've all put into moving these forward. We do have another item, review and action on a new application. And that's twenty twenty-one dash oh two CAM. Hillcrest Partners LLC, one forty-three Rowayton Avenue. Four-unit residential building preliminary review. Just before we open this up to the developer, I just want to mention. You may recall a similar project at the intersection of Rowayton Avenue. And which we approved just about a year ago for a number of luxury units. And I just happened to be walking, walking by there earlier this week, and I saw that they have finally begun the demolition to get that project moving forward. So with that, I'll call on the representative for the project, and I apologize, I don't know who that is.
Mr. Schulman, it's me, William Hennessy.
Okay, Attorney Hennessy.
And let me start by saying I'm aware of the hour and all you've done tonight, so I will try to be concise. For the record, I'm William Hennessy from Carmody Torrent Sandec, and Hennessy with me is my colleague Jason Klein, who will control the screen. And from the architectural firm that's been working on this project, Minefield Associates, is Colin Growth here. And Colin and I will first we give the presentation, but Jason may have to fill in some facts. And also, we all represent the applicant, which is Hillcrest Partners. A closely held corporation represented here tonight by principal Charles Eaton. Mr. Eaton is somewhere in the, the participant lane here, so we're all available for comments, I think, questions. I think I will begin by giving you a little background to the project. Jason, if you could pull up the site plan, just not the site plan, but the, that's perfect. We're here for site plan approval and coastal site plan approval. We think we measure up in every way to the zone this property is in, which is the Rowayton Village District Zone, and we think we meet all of the other site plan criteria contained in your regulation. So the property we'll be talking about is one four three Rowayton Avenue. And if you're just entering the village and you're headed south, one four three is on your right. It's on the western side of the road. It borders directly, as you can see, the Five Mile River. It's crossed from the bank just before you get to the fire station, which is almost, but not quite directly across the street. It abuts to the south. Its northern neighbor is, in other words, the Sixth Taxing District Art Center Building. And it is a lot, about sixteen thousand square feet. It's improved. Let's go to the next slide, Jason, with the two buildings. Jason will point them out with a little clicker right there. And they are used as commercial office buildings, have been for many years. Disrupted, you know, intermittently, but most recently substantially. Seventies. As you can see from this image, the site is, it almost sets a record for impervious surface. It's ninety-six percent. It's paved with either drive lanes or parking. There's twenty-two parking spaces. The fifty-two hundred square foot office building. And most of the site is either building or pavement. The other feature on the side, of course, is the waterfront, where there's a bulkhead and some boat slips, as you can see from there. Do we have another photo, Jason? I thought in the deck there was, there it is, from the street. So you see, there's the fence, very little landscaping, and then the two buildings as you go down and all the. The plan here is to completely, and I mean completely, redevelop the property by taking up all the pavement and taking down both of the buildings, and then changing the use to residential use. And in this case condominiums. Four condominiums, it's planned presently as three, three-bedroom and one, four-bedroom condominiums, all situated in a single building. Which Colin will describe to you in a moment. The, the, the site plan dramatically changes and will be, I think it's fair to say, just plain unrecognizable, in a good way. The, the pavement and the pervious surface gets reduced down to, I think, fifty-six percent. From ninety-six percent, there's a very rich palette of landscaping that will go through. Very beautiful little private garden that Colin will be talking about. The twenty-two spaces get reduced to thirteen spaces. The traffic impacts wind up being about one-third of what they are now. And remarkably, and this is the, the odd thing, you know, representing developers, we usually are called upon to, you know, try to take advantage of every opportunity there is to develop a property in terms of density and reduce parking and so forth. And this, I have to say, this project is completely the opposite. This project, do we have a site plan we can go to, Jason? Will not only transform the entire streetscape with a beautiful building, but it will substantially reduce the impervious surface by about forty-five percent. It will introduce landscaping where none exists. It will reduce parking by about forty percent. It will use about forty percent of its allowed density. It will overpark the project in the sense that, you know, instead of putting a one-point-three spaces unit will be about two-point-five, and it'll still have space for visitors or users of the marina. It is, and I think by every standard, a very unique opportunity for the, for the village and for the city in general. The other substantial feature that will be brought to bear is, in accordance with the Village District standards, because this is in one building, as opposed to two buildings, there is a requirement that the public access be provided. And that public access will extend from the street to the waterfront via a walkway between the Sixth Taxing District Building and the proposed new building. And it will allow people to, you know, generally stroll down and enjoy the waterfront, which is, of course, one of the objectives of the Village District standards. So with that as background, I'll turn it over to Colin. I was going to say I'll turn the microphone over, but really, I guess I'm turning the screen over. I will just tell you one little bit of thing before I do, just before we file this, we met with the Sixth Taxing District, and we've continued to dialogue with them. And we think that there might be an opportunity to do a little bit better between the two buildings in terms of that public access area by jointly working the landscaping. They're, they're building a setback from the property line, I'm going to guess and say, six or seven feet. And there may be an opportunity to do some landscaping on both sides of the line so that it isn't evident as you come down the public access walkway that there is, you know, a property line in the middle. It'll be, I think, a much nicer thing. So we're working very actively with the, with the district on those concepts, and you could probably view them as tweaks at the end of the day, but they might be meaningful, and I just want to point that out to you. We think we'll have resolution quicker than that. So Colin, are you here and ready?
I'm here. Bill, how are you?
I'm good.
Excellent. Commissioners, a pleasure to see you all again. I always prefer to be in person, miss seeing your, your faces in the chamber, but this is a close second, I guess. Very excited to be working in the village of Rowayton again and bring you a, a project of this magnitude and impactfully, in a positive way for the streetscape. We've been involved in a number of projects in the Rowayton Village District, and we feel that this one really checks all the boxes in terms of its massing and how it relates to its neighbors, fitting in with the neighboring character of the Village District and maintaining that, that charm that's uniquely Rowayton. It's, it's designed in a traditional vernacular and really mimics a lot of the neighbors and continues the, the theme of the village. Another building, the street facade is, is aligned to comply with the setback, but also continues the, the street wall of the, the adjacent Sixth Taxing District Building. So you're going to get a more continuous streetscape and the front yard improvements with the, the garden that's been designed by the landscape architect and the, the elevated dooryard, as it were, is really going to be a, a major benefit to the, the streetscape and the people that, that walk in the district. So we, we see that as a, as a large positive. As Attorney Hennessy noted, there's a drastic reduction in the amount of impervious space on the site, so even though the building is, is a larger footprint than what's there existing, we are drastically reducing the, the amount of impervious area and also facilitating greater public access as part of the, the Village District requirements. So as you'll see from the plans, there's the public access along the waterfront, and then, as, as Attorney Hennessy mentioned, the the ongoing negotiations with the Sixth Taxing District as to how we can, we can up the game in between the two properties on the northern property line to, to really make that a much more beneficial asset to the neighborhood and to the property. So the, the building, the four residences are designed to kind of be viewed as two separate masses. If Jay can click forward to maybe the next slide. The view from the waterside tends to mimic more of the commercial vernacular in Rowayton. I believe some of the, the terms that we were throwing around in house were a sail loft or a, a working building, so a little bit more glazing where commercial activity might have occurred and they needed that, needed that light during the day. Slightly different cladding material, but still keeping within those traditional forms and, and shapes and, and openings. So we feel it's really going to be a good contribution to the waterfront and still facilitate that water access for the public and also maintain the boat slips as well. So very excited about that. If you want to click the next slide, Jay. Elevations are, again, very simple, traditional forms, shed dormers in this particular building. This is the elevation you'd see from Rowayton Avenue, minus the, the landscaping embellishments, but stripped down to the architecture. You can go throughout Rowayton and see very similar forms and shutters and materials. So very much a continuation of the Village District. And the, the river stone, stone wall for the landscaping retaining walls and the foundation material. Can you go to the next slide, Jay? This would be the view to the south, so the slight, the site does naturally slope from Rowayton Avenue down towards the, the river. So we're taking advantage of that to provide a ramped parking and also a ramp up to the, the first story of the building. The parking is mostly going to be concealed beneath the building. So the residents will have a, a private garage to, to pull into and park their vehicles through that door. There are a number of terraces and balconies that have water views to the, to the south and to the, to the west. So the residents are going to have outdoor space that's private, as well as the public space on the, on the property. And there's a common entry that's kind of a notch between the building. So it's been designed as, to read as two separate masses, even though they are connected with this, this common core that houses the elevator and communicating and egress stair. If you can go to the next slide, Jay. The, the waterside view, this is the west facade, would be two units. There's a, a single flat unit on the first floor above the garage, and then there's a duplex unit, which is the four-bedroom unit Attorney Hennessy mentioned that faces the water on the second floor, so that's a duplex unit and has a little bit more square footage. And two outside zones with the, the arch-covered balcony that you see, and also the projecting balcony that you see on the right side of that elevation. If you can go to the next slide, Jay. The view to the north, you can see we've broken the massing into two, two separate vocabularies and effectively created some variety in that. So as you're walking down there and enjoying the plantings, it's not going to be one big massive building, it's going to be a little bit different. There's going to be some gables, some different window patterns, different siding materials, so more variety, and you'll have the entry stoops on that side as well, so a little bit more visual interest as you're, as you're going down the public access way. Next slide, Jay. This is just a, a plan of the garage, so you see the concealed parking, there's an elevator core, some storage, trash storage room, and the communicating elevator stair. You can go to the next. First floor plan, there's a, a one unit to the left, one unit to the right, and then the central core. Outside of the building, at the bottom of the page, you can see there's some stairs up from the sloped parking area. And then there's also a long ramped walkway that comes up from Rowayton Avenue. Brings you up, if you're visiting the village, you'll be able to walk up without going up a flight of stairs, which is nice. And then you can enter the building, and there's an elevator for convenience, and then also the entrance to the residences. Go to the next floor. Basically a repeat of the, the first floor plans, but these units are multi-level units, so they do have a second floor up in the attic. And you can see the stairs in the, the upper left and the upper right, so they get an additional bonus space up in the attic. And if we can go to that level. Jay, there's the one on the right, gets an additional roughly seven hundred plus square feet, the one on the left is another thirteen hundred or so. There's some mechanical space concealed in the roof, as well as a bulkhead ceiling over the kitchen and living area in the middle of the, the unit to the, to the east. And then there's a little bit of a mechanical, concealed mechanical space above the, the common area. You can go to the next page, Jay. Overall, the, the landscape plan has been worked out by Wesley Stout Associates. They can speak on this more in detail at a later date when we've expanded our discussions with the Sixth Taxing District, but generally there's a, a public access way along the north side of the property. It's down to a common dock along the waterfront, and that's all been improved. Even though I think it is relatively new bulkhead, but it's going to be renovated and you'll have decking and hardscaping along with elevated planters that house ornamental plant material and, and other visually interesting features. Then the driveway is greatly improved. It's for the store management. It's where the storm management facilities are going to be, as well as the couple on-street or on-driveway parking spaces for visitors to the residences or to the boat slips. Much greater capacity for buffer between the neighboring parcel to the south. So there's lots of room for planting along the existing wall that's there. You can see there's planting buffering, the retaining wall that's going to be holding up the building. So you're not going to see as much of a projection of the building above the grade as the grade drops away to get you down to the garage. It's going to be planted and softened by that. Also, the various stone materials are going to lend some character to that and increase the shading and really give some depth to the composition of the building. And you can see that the dooryard's been worked out with the street trees and the landscape retaining wall. Got a little sitting area, some shrubs up against the building and a little bit of a lawn area for the person that gets the front unit there. It's really kind of becomes a village dooryard. You get a nice little area to look out and enjoy the village. End of the slides, right, Jay? Is there one more?
I think that's probably it.
Yeah. So that's a relatively in-depth, but overview of the proposal.
I would say that we received comments from your staff and we understand all of them and we're working on getting a response. And we think, you know, just, you know, probably a week we'll have everything fully ready to submit in response to that. We've been told by Mr. Ireland that the project is of such a scale that he doesn't require CAC meeting, but he's asked us to reach out to the individual usual touchstones at those meetings. So we've got all of that in process. We are going to present to the Five Mile River Commission next Tuesday, I believe, Jay. I think it's the fourteenth. And the Harbor Management Commission has indicated to us that they don't see the need for a presentation. They will defer to the Five Mile River Commission. So we think we're in pretty good shape to come before you at an early date and hopefully obtain approval.
Thank you for the proposal. I think, again, because you've got to go before the Five Mile River Commission, we'll wait until after that to set a date. It sounds as if we're probably looking at early February for a hearing on this.
We would very much appreciate that. As you know, you know, the market's a hard thing to predict in time. And the best that we can do with moving a project forward is, you know, checking boxes and getting past things. And certainly, this is a big thing. So we appreciate one thing greatly, and that is the help of your staff in getting us on tonight to present this preliminary overview. It's very helpful to us. Well, we promise and will commit to doing everything we can to keep this going. And we hope to see you early, early February. That would be terrific. I see Mr. Eaton has hit his on-camera and I'm sure I conveyed his sentiments as well.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. If you have questions, please ask us now or if they occur to you later, please convey them to your staff and we'll try to be as responsive as we can.
Tonight might not be the time for an answer. I'd be concerned about the possibility of flooding. Obviously, I'm sure you're placing this above the flood zone. But I would be interested at some point in knowing at just what elevation the residences will begin. You know, this is a project that's going to be in place for many years. And I personally am not certain that the current flood elevations that are being used along the river are adequate for the long term. And I just ask that you keep that in mind as your planning proceeds.
We will, we will be prepared to respond to that when we come back. As you know, the improvements that are there now are non-compliant largely.
Right.
Everything that is here will be compliant. The only thing that is below the flood plan, as you know, is the park, a portion of the park. Not even all of it. The residents will be safely above. But we'll give you more details on that.
Other questions from the commissioners? All right, if not, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have a couple of quick, what I expect to be quick administrative items. The first approval of minutes for our December fifteenth meeting. Can I have a motion on those?
So move.
Michael moves, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Rod seconds. All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstaining, I wasn't here.
Hey, Frank and Nick are abstaining. The motion passes. And then the meeting of December twenty-second. The minutes of that meeting, again, may I have a motion?
So move.
Okay, Mike moves and Josh seconds. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstention.
Okay, Ms. Thomas abstains. That passes as well. And comments of the director?
Sure, just a couple of updates. I had to jump out of your meeting to go to the planning committee meeting for a while. I had to get get TPUDC approved for the zoning regs rewrite, so that made it through the first hurdle. I'm working with them on a purchase order. Hopefully, I'll get that out tomorrow or Monday for them to start looking at the East Norwalk regulations in terms of the parking and the amenities that were proposed as part of that. So they'll hopefully be working on that over the next month or so while we iron out the contract details. And then we can get started hopefully in February and March in earnest on the overall zoning rewrite. Couple other things, we do have RFPs back for peer review for architecture and for traffic.
I wanted, I wanted to ask Rod if he would be willing to serve on the committee to select the architectural review firm.
Sure.
Okay. So Rod will do that and Galen has agreed to serve on the traffic review committee. I'm sorry, Stephen, I interrupted you.
No, that's okay. The contracts with all our current consultants have expired. They're still, you know, authorized to proceed for any actions that we have until we get, you know, possibly them in place or somebody in addition to as well. And the last thing, I'll just give you a quick update on Norden. We're still trying to get the hearing set for the twenty-seventh. We've been patiently waiting for the neighbors who had hired the outside attorney to get their consultant reports together. I got something in this afternoon. I'm not sure if it was the actual reports or just some letters from neighbors, so I'm going to look at that tomorrow over the weekend and get that out. And obviously, the applicant's going to need a couple of weeks to be able to respond to that. So hopefully, we can proceed on January twenty-seventh, but I should know for certain, I think, by Monday.
Okay. Comments, commissioners? All right, then just a brief comment on my part. I failed to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Let's hope for happier and healthier upcoming year for all of us.
Yeah.
With that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, Stephanie moves, there's a second?
Second.
Josh seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. See you all in a couple of weeks.